Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 1st, 2020 Carlisle Borough Council Workshop. We will begin with our call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We begin this evening with citizens to be heard, and I believe we have one scheduled, Mr. Paul Howell. I believe your mic will be unmuted. If it's not, it will be shortly, and then you may begin. Please begin with your name and address, business or residential, for the record.
Hello, sir. My name is Paul Howell. I own the property at 308 Cherry Street in Carlisle, Pennsylvania. It's just north of the Cherry Street laundromat, just south of the old Crystal Factory. In and around the date of June of 2017, I had a gentleman, we rented a property to him, and at the same time, he called into the Borough Water Office and had the water bill moved over to his name. Coming in, started in about six months later, sometime between around Christmas, about the end of December, beginning of July, we had a toilet replaced at the property, which in stent apparently caused a large water bill for the customer. Apparently, whether they were using more water or this toilet, we had the toilet replaced and fixed for them. And the customer never paid the water bill. So on the March 7th, 2018, they had a door hanger hung at the door, had the water shut off. And then the Crowborough to Joshua Fisher set up a promise to pay notice for the water bill, signed by Joshua Fisher on March 7th, 2018. On that same day, paid a $400 down payment and made five current payments of $200 apiece, roughly onsite for the promise to pay, but not paying the full amount of the last payment. So therefore, the promise to pay was never actually fully realized. On the piece of paper that it took me a right-to-know request to get, it also tells on the right-to-know request that the customer also has to continue paying the normal water bill itself. This was not done. Joshua Fisher never paid additional water bill on the next three water bill payments. After that, the water was never turned off to the property, and no other communication was done to myself or my wife who officially has the property in her name. I stopped here. I was here in the July council meeting. I was told about the same situation up to Borough Council. I was asked to have a meeting with the Borough Manager. After three weeks of not having a phone call, I did call into the Borough Manager. Apparently, my phone number was not recognized or was not, was maybe miscommunication to the Borough Manager. I had a meeting with the Borough Manager at the end of July, with a promise to have a phone call returned to me. As of August 22nd, my lawyer received information from the Borough Lawyer for the water, that recommends since the Water Department Utilities, that says my property was going to continue to be leaned on. This is after I did not get a phone call. So I did call the Borough Manager that I had a meeting with. We had several conversations where she admitted that the Borough did not properly execute terminating the water service or doing anything to stop the water bill from increasing. Plus, the tenant moved out of the property sometime around September, about six, eight months after the property moved out in October 2018 with an outstanding water bill of $15,666.80. So the tenant then went additional two full payments and an additional partial payment, without making any payments to the Carlisle Water Department itself. The reason I'm going to you guys is because apparently, even though nothing was done to properly show off this water or properly track that there was a large past due amount on this bill, I am now being forced to pay the entire amount of payment, which I find completely unacceptable. This was not done properly by the Borough Water Department. The Borough Water Department let this gentleman not pay the full promise to pay, which he signed in law here, that says he's allowed to pay, nor did he keep up with existing payments to keep this up and going. This was told to me and understood me by Borough employees, that they understood the fact that there was a mess-up by the Borough Water Department. So the Borough did not do this properly, and now I am being fined. I am being threatened with court fees and leaning of my property because a Borough employee did not properly execute the promise to pay or the billing of the local water department. I'm coming here once again to say this is not appropriate. I'm sorry. I don't know where I'm looking here. I'm very sorry, but I am disgusted by the fact that the government can look me in the eye or over a phone call can tell me that they messed up. This was an accident. It didn't happen, but I am still fully 100% legally responsible for this entire bill. This is, I find this completely unacceptable. And I'd like some feedback from the town council here because I want anybody to explain to me why this is okay. I really don't understand it. Somebody could please explain to me why, even though our employees or pass themselves messed this up, that I am now legally responsible for the entire bill. At most, and most I should be charged for a prorated bill of the last bill. If I got a bill for 60-some dollars, which is the last prorated bill, you know what? Life goes on. I wouldn't be standing here right now. But the fact that this was done negligently, I would like some feedback from the council about this, please.
Thank you for your comments, sir. It's usually our practice, and I would encourage you, unless someone feels differently, to continue to work with the staff. I understand that we did not have a process in place to address this, but we will, and that you've been invited to work with the staff to develop a policy that would improve the situation. So I would encourage you to continue to do that. That's our practice. I don't know if anybody else would like to make any comments or statements on this. Okay. But yeah, so sir, please continue to work with the staff on this. I understand you've been working with them and the payment arrangements and the payment arrangements have been made. So I would just continue, I would just encourage you to continue to do that.
Here's the problem, sir. I'm sorry. We're sorry about this, but there has been no thing, pardon me, that we are going to be looking at this and saying, listen, when we mess up, the Borough of Carlisle will fix our mistake. Okay, the problem isn't the payment plan or the fact I have money. It's the fact that I have a government, part of the government, the local government, that says, this isn't your fault. We messed up here, but we're not going to come and take your money from you. And if you don't pay us the money, we are going to put a lien on our property, and we're going to add all of these legal fees to it. And by the way, now it's a 6% per year fine on top of that, that you don't pay your ability. There is no discussion to me about, hey, listen, let's discuss this together. Because I offered like, let's work on this together. If there's a rule here where the Borough or a township or something like that messes up, and they won't take any responsibility, you want to work on them together? Great. I will help you write a proposal for this. Okay, I've also offered already to settle this. Do you guys get something out of this? Because I go, fine, did I not know about it? Great. Let's work on something together. There's been zero communication to me about anything that we're going to be working on this together. Okay, it's, well, we're going to charge you, you pay up. The Constitution protects me from life, liberty, and property. Right now, I have a government come after my property, or something I didn't mess up with.
Sir, I understand your lawyer has been in contact with our lawyer, and I think that's where we are right now. Staff is working on developing a policy. They will come back to us with some options, and hopefully you can be a part of that. But I would just, at this point, there's nothing that we can do until staff comes back to us with some options, or our attorneys work something out.
Am I muted? Okay, let's work on this. And let's say that I will work with you guys. I paid my first $300 payment to you guys to stop the lawsuits and stuff from happening. Let's say we table all this discussion from now, and I work with your tenant, and let's say we find something together to work something like this out. Okay, this was not done by me. This was done by employees of the Borough who did not properly follow up with a bill here and let somebody run up a huge bill without me ever knowing about it. How is that fair to me?
The Mayor.
Yes, Madam Manager.
Yes, if I may, sir. Borough staff would welcome the opportunity to sit back down with Mr. Howell, and we can review the account in its entirety together. And, you know, we'll certainly consult with legal counsel as we move forward, since I know that Mr. Howell has also secured legal counsel, but we're certainly open and more than willing to sit down with Mr. Howell.
Mr. Howell, anything further?
Listen, I don't need legal counsel here. We're all gentlemen here. We're all ladies. We can work this out together. Okay?
I understand that, but we're not, we're not going to do that here tonight.
No, no, I understand. Listen, I don't want, listen, let's work this together. Let's sit down like human beings, like we're not part of a government bureaucracy here and work this out together. I'm praying we can do that. And Mr. Scott, listen, I'm a big fan of yours. I see in town and stuff like that. I'm glad to see you're part of the community and stuff. I would like, if you can be in that meeting, fantastic. I'd love to get your opinion on it. Now, I'm going to help out a Borough, the place that I live and have my businesses and stuff like that, more than anybody else. I want to see something fair happen here. But it can't be, it can't be, it can't be in a barrel of a gun. And when you threaten somebody with lawsuits and stuff like that, it's almost the same legitimate thing.
I wouldn't characterize it like that. I think that if you are willing to sit down, staff will sit down with you, and myself or another member of council can make the meeting if it works with our schedule. So let's just do that, and we don't need the hyperbole.
Again, I did not mean a hyperbole. My apologies on the hyperbole, but we'll go from there, and I appreciate it. Looking forward. You guys reach out to me, okay?
Mr. Howell, before you step away, sorry. Do you have a, you have a written lease with your tenant?
I did. Yes, sir.
Would it allow you to pursue this amount? I assume you've discussed this with Attorney Kelso.
Right now, we can't seem to find the tenant. It was, it seemed to leave the area at least somewhere between one year and 18 months ago. So when I was like, sure, where is that at this point, sir?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Howell. Moving on, I will entertain a motion for council to approve the workshop minutes from August. Or, yeah, the August workshop meeting minutes, if there's a motion.
Moved.
Thank you. Moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deb Fulham Winston this time. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Closed. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to Mayor's report, I believe staff has a COVID-19 update for us.
Good evening. Just some latest figures from the governor's office. This is the fifth straight week that the governor's reported that there's been a drop in the percentage of positive cases, which is down to 3.2%. He's using 5% basically as a benchmark for high-risk areas. He's identified seven counties that have a rate higher than 5% right now. Cumberland County is listed in the moderate category, so we're not at that 5%, which is good. The ZIP code area of 17013 has 200 cases, which 3,000 negative, and the 015 has 96 positive cases with 1,900 negative cases. So if we continue to follow those guidelines, it appears that we're making progress against this pandemic. I've been able to review some local plans and continue to work with community leaders when they submit those plans to the office. On behalf of the volunteer fire companies, it still has affected their fundraising capabilities. The biggest one still is with the occupancy level. They can't really open up their dining room and run their functions due to the requirements of that guideline. We did send out our contribution mailers, and the second notice will go out this week. They have applied for various grants and have received grants and are now waiting a substantial grant from the state that they expect that they will receive within the next several weeks. Any questions?
All right, doesn't look there's any. Thank you, Chief. Keep us posted. Community Planning and Smart Growth Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four items tonight. The first two are going to be staff updates, and then the last two are going to be action items. So the first one is an update from staff on the land development plan for lots four and six of the IAC site. So I see Mike's box just popped up. I'm going to throw it to him.
Good evening, everyone. So the first application you have tonight is for lots four and six as part of the IAC land development. Each lot will have 25 townhouse units. Everything okay for the sound? Good. And at this point, the planning commission has endorsed the plan at their last Thursday meeting. We have not heard any issues from the designer or from the applicant with regards to any of the conditions. And that's it. If there's any other questions regarding the report or where it stands right now, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Any questions?
Mr. Ramsey, apologies. I totally skipped over our wonderful auditors from SE and K. My fault. So if you wouldn't mind, can we just go back to that, and then we'll go back to you? Because you guys probably have other things you'd like to be doing. So please, I will throw it to Kevin Stalfer and Craig Whitmer of SCK. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Kevin Stalfer, partner here with SCK. And I have also on the line here, or also on the call, is Craig Whitmer. Just before I get too deep, is my screen sharing okay? Is everybody seeing an auto presentation? Okay, I'm seeing a thumbs up. Very good. Just wanted to make sure. So appreciate your time here this evening to present the results from our audit. On page number two, I just want to go through what we're going to cover here this evening. Basically, I have a condensed presentation of the audited financial statements or the comprehensive annual financial report, your CAFR, your management letter, and your required communications with those charged with governance. So I've taken over 150 pages, condensed it down into hopefully about a 15 to 20-minute presentation for you here this evening. So again, this is just a condensed PowerPoint summary of this evening of those other three documents. Page number three is just a high-level summary of results from the audit. Overall, I think you'll be very pleased with the results from the audit this year. First and foremost, we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that you can receive on your financial statements, so very positive note. Also happy to report that we didn't have any findings, other than material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. And again, happy to report that we didn't have any of those this year. Finally, from a financial standpoint, very happy to report there was a positive change in fund balance or net position for most of the funds this year. So again, a positive note financially for the, and again, I think just overall positive results stemming from the audit. On page number four, it's just a little bit more details related to your independent auditors report. Once again, this is where we, as your independent auditors, issue our opinion on your financial statements. And this year, we were able to issue the unmodified audit opinion. What exactly does that mean? Essentially, that the financial statements were fairly presented in all material respects and can be relied upon. What it is not is an opinion on internal controls, nor does it an opinion or results of fraud investigation. As people hear the word audit, and they think it's all encompassing, or that we're looking at every transaction. Although they feel like it, to Borough staff, we do not look at every transaction as part of our audit. We can design our procedures to ultimately issue the opinion that the financial statements are materially correct, and we were able to do so this year. Also included in the comprehensive annual financial report is the management discussion and analysis, or the MDNA for short. And that is unaudited information that's prepared by Borough management that offers more of a comparative narrative analysis. Most of the financial statements themselves are just numbers and then some disclosure behind those amounts. The MDNA really kind of offers the why and some explanation from year to year. So a good synopsis there for explaining the details of the Borough and the happenings during the year. We've taken certain excerpts from your financial statements, just to go over a couple of financial highlights for the year. On number five, we just have some general fund analysis. Includes your revenues here on page number five. Last year, 2018 to 2019 actual results, and a comparison to the 2019 budget with a variance column on the right-hand side. In total, for revenues for the 2019 actual, just over $11 million for the year, an increase of just under $400,000, or about 4% in comparison to 2018. You can see the top item is the largest fluctuation within your taxes. On that increase, about $280,000, mostly due to an increase in the earned income taxes from 2019. A couple of other fluctuations were included under the intergovernmental revenues. That's due to grants that were received during 2019. And then the last item are your proceeds from refunds and reimbursements, almost doubled in comparison to the previous year, mainly due to insurance reimbursements that were received during 2019. And those fluctuations are kind of right in line with the budget as well on comparison to 2018. On the next page, very similar information is just looking at the expenditure side of things. So right in the middle of the page where it says total expenditures in 2019, actual about $9.6 million, an increase of about 5% or close to $500,000 compared to 2018. The biggest fluctuation is within the public safety. The total police expenditures increased about $307,000 during the year. And then it's mixed amongst all the categories, but health insurance also increased for 2018. And again, that hits most of the categories that we're seeing there for the year. Under the other financing sources and uses, the biggest fluctuation are the transfers out to other funds this year. That totaled about $600,000, where last year, the transfers out were only about $159,000. So the bottom line, figuratively and literally here, the net change in fund balance for 2019 was about $868,000. Again, compared to 2018, a little bit less, but due to more transfers that were made during 2019. Again, comparing it to budget on the right-hand side, budgeted deficit of $40,000, so a positive variance there of about $907,000. On the next page, it just looks at the total fund balance as of December 31st, broken down by category that's required by GASBIE or the Government Accounting Standards Board. Non-spendable fund balances are those that basically sounds like any long-term receivables, inventories, or prepaid. Like you see that total there is about $316,000. A total amount in the restricted fund balance in the general fund, about $54,000, where you're restricted by outside parties for what those funds have to be spent on. And then the next category is committed, where Borough Council was taking action for those. And that breakdown, about $97,878 is for future recreation, while $500,000 is for future other post-employment benefits. Moving down to the next category is the assigned category, also determined by Borough Council. It's split out there about $43,000 for the comprehensive plan, about $361,000 for future benefits, and then about $581,000 for the deficit in 2020. So anytime you have a budget deficit one year, basically setting that aside because you're going to utilize existing fund balance for that, that exists. When come down to it, the next item or the last item is your unassigned fund balance, $0.4 million. If you take that as a percentage of the annual operating expenditures, about 77%, so a very healthy fund balance for the general fund to have the reserves there for the expenditures of over 75%. The other funds that you have that are governmental funds, your capital projects, highway aid, and asset forfeiture, each are restricted by external parties that have to be spent on specific purposes. So that's why each of those are considered restricted fund balances, and you can see the respective balances by those funds. On the next page, I'll now turn your attention now to the utility side of things. You can see the breakdown here between your water, sewer, parking, the newly established stormwater fund, which again was new in 2019, is split out apart as its own fund. And then on the right-hand side is your solid base fund. For the most part, fairly consistent with some minor decreases in your operating revenue within your water and sewer funds. And it also saw the decrease there in the operating expenses specifically in your water fund as well to offset that. The only other item I wanted to point out here are your capital contributions and grants in your sewer fund. You can see over $2.4 million. Those are the capital contributions coming from the townships, most specifically for the Latour project for 2019, and that was of a significant portion of the $2.4 million there. So once again, a positive note, if you look at each of these five funds, the change in net position is a positive for each of those funds. Again, the sewer fund a little bit skewed because of those contributions coming in, and then those assets will be depreciated over time in the future, but still a positive note to see a change in that position. It's positive for each of the five utility funds. On the next page, I'll just turn your attention now briefly to the pension plans. That's part of the footnote number seven. And this patient, once again, is as of December 31st. Once we're looking at the planned fiduciary net position, but you can see that the planned fiduciary net position does exceed the total pension liability that's actuarially determined. So a positive note there that basically that is fully funded for the non-uniform and the police pension plan. And that's why each of those are over 100%. So again, a positive note there to be fully funded for each of the respective plans. The last piece of the CAFR that I wanted to highlight, just the debt margin. So this is from the statistical schedule of the CAFR itself, and then she can see the debt limit and how it's compared to the previous year, or excuse me, a point about four years ago, and then also about 10 years ago. So you can see the debt limit has increased during that time period, but also has increased the debt applicable to the debt limit. For debt this year, the total increases or drawdown were about $935,000, on down on the 2018 note, but no new debt issuances during 2019. Next, I'll just turn your attention now briefly to our management letter. It's kind of three-fold. One, have there been any findings to report on? Once again, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control? We're happy to report there were no findings to report on, so very positive note for the Borough. A summary of new standards that will affect the Borough in the future. Once again, those are known as GASPIs. We've looked there. We have reviewed those in detail with management assist with the implementation of those in future years. And then the most of the rest of the management letter, as well as my presentation here this evening, is just graphical analysis. That way, you can see trends over time. So the first graph that we have is a cash and investment comparison graph. Once again, I always want to point out the general fund, you can see the large spike there in 2017. And that was debt that was issued, that basically just hasn't been moved over to the other funds in which it will be utilized. They're offset by due to, due from, but the cash is being held within the general fund, and that makes up about $8 million of that balance there within the general fund. The other fluctuation that you're seeing is within the sewer fund, obviously, is you have the project ongoing within the sewer fund, spending of those bond proceeds or those debt proceeds. And then, and then towards the right-hand side, the newly established stormwater fund. So obviously, that's only there for 2019. On the next page is just a revenue comparison graph. I just want to start with the taxes. In total, over the past five years, they've increased just under $700,000, or about 8%. And one thing, that's all taxes, so that's real estate, real transfer tax, earned income tax, local service tax as well that make up that. But in total, they've increased about 8% over a five-year period. In the middle of the page, you'll see the intergovernmental revenue. That's the debt that are received in any given year. So obviously, that can fluctuate from year to year. Also, you'll see a fluctuation in the miscellaneous revenue as debt is issued. That's included there in the miscellaneous revenue and not included in one of the other categories. And again, the other fluctuations that you're seeing are within your sewer fund because of those reimbursements coming back from the townships. And once again, the newly established stormwater fund is new in 2019. As far as the expenses are concerned, this part again, especially when you compare 2019 to 2018, most of the categories are very consistent, and you may actually see a decrease once again in comparison to the previous year. A couple outliers, again, in 2017, under the general government. And that's urban redevelopment expenses that were incurred during that time period, so that's the big spike that you're seeing there for 2017. And on the right-hand side, the establishment of the stormwater fund, obviously, only for 2019. The last graph that we have is just a change in fund balance. The last graph that we have is just a change in fund balance or net position. So once again, I think a very positive note, especially on the right hand side are the utilities. That's been a positive change in that position for each of those funds during the past five years. Projects a little bit skewed there, once again, you issued debt in two thousand and seventeen, and it's those monies in two thousand and eighteen. So that's just timing of when the monies were issued versus when they were spent. And again, overall fairly positive increases there in the general fund. Spark surpluses are concerned, especially over the past three out of the four years there. The other letter that we have is just our required communications with those charged with governance. Any difficulties in completing the audit or disagreements with management on accounting principles? We'd have to report on those here in this letter. I'm happy to report there were no such issues or disagreements, so that's why we just consider it our standard communication letter. Also attached to that letter are the journal entries that were made related to the audit. Some of the journal entries were provided by management there on that listing, but we are required to include those and attach those to our required communications letter. So just in summary, again, I think very positive results from the audit this year. First and foremost, we were able to issue the unmodified audit opinion, which is the best that you can receive. We didn't have any findings related to our audit this year. And also a positive note financially, have you had a positive change in fund balance or net position for each of the individual? For two thousand and nineteen. I know that was a lot of information. It went fairly quickly, but I certainly wanted to open it up for any questions or comments related to either the presentation itself or from their documents related to the audit.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin, for that presentation, and thank you, Craig, as well. Are there any questions for our auditors on this report? Good news is in very short supply, so we are very happy to receive some positive news and nice findings. Again, any questions from council?
Just to thank you to our staff, because unmodified audit opinion is, you know, it's an exciting term for an accountant, I guess.
All right. If there's nothing else, thank you very much, gentlemen, and we will see.
Thank you for your time this evening. If you do have any questions, please feel free to contact us directly or filter those through Richard, and we'd be happy to answer those. Once again, we greatly appreciate doing a service for the borough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you as well. And now, see, the floor is yours once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so we left off with, there were any questions for Mike on the IAC Lot Four and Six update?
I was just going to say that there are a lot of, there are quite a few comments, and it sounds like most of those came from the county planning committee, uh, planning office? Or was it from our? I just look like there were a lot, and it is conditional that they, they agree to all of those, like fifty-some notes. That's correct?
Correct. So the report was generated both through myself and Mark Mallory, providing for the comments. So what you see is what we generated. So there's nothing in terms of concerning with regards to the number. Again, staff was just very thorough, considering the importance of this development.
Absolutely. I just, I was just going down through, and it was just a lot to absorb, and I just wanted to ensure that that is what we are approving for tonight.
Good question. Mike, do we have any sense of the timeline for the construction?
Um, it's hard to say. I'm kind of still waiting for the full compliance package for lots five, seven and eight, which was, you know, approved at least a good, you know, four or five months ago. So it's just one of those things where I think at this point, one of the key deliverables, once they get the town, or at least the borough endorsement, is, you know, going through additional engineering and design work, and ultimately, you know, finalizing the development agreement. And the most important thing is escrow. So I think obviously the financials and who's paying what and how much of what are probably the key determinants right now. But speaking with the consultants last Friday, they're definitely pushing along both with the five, seven and eight, and now you're entertaining lots four and six. And some good news, they're definitely going to be submitting very shortly, hopefully for lot one, which is the five point two acre commercial site. So at least what I'm hearing and seeing from them, they're definitely committed to pursuing everything.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Not seen any questions. I'll move on to our next update, which is on a small cell five G. Mike, is that you again?
Yep. So item six B is just a quick update for everyone that's been monitoring this. So Keith Brennan and myself has pretty much finished reviewing the draft zoning ordinance that we received from Cohen Law Group. They're out of Pittsburgh, and they specialize in these sort of things. Um, we were going to probably have you guys at least sign off and provide the endorsement to proceed with the public hearing. Unfortunately, again, in the interim, past few months, there was a case that was decided upon, and Cohen Law Group wanted to revisit the ordinance under the belief that, with the way it's structured right now, or the small cells, the five G, that these would require Borough Council approval as a conditional use item. And the sentiment was that that might be rather onerous based on the recent court decision. So Cohen Law Group is going to, I wouldn't say come up with a band-aid solution, but a quick fix to that, and then pass it back to Keith Brennan and myself. So Keith's preference was to have at least a properly, fully finalized zoning ordinance amendment as opposed to either Keith or myself, you know, cobbling a quick solution to this.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Any questions, comments or concerns on, on five G? Great. Thank you very much, Mike. So moving on, and speaking of Cohen Law Group, my next item is an action item. I'll make a motion that Borough Council may approve an agreement with Cohen Law Group for cable franchise negotiation services.
Mr. Krampsey's made a motion to approve a franchise agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jeff Stube. Any further discussion on this item?
So just as way of background, I'll add, add on to what Mike was saying. So Cohen Law Group seems to be one of the specialists in the state on these type of topics. So this item would be to sign them on to look into our cable franchise agreement and a potential to expand based on what we currently have in the borough. So I think it's a, it's good that they're exploring that. It would provide our residents with, with another option potentially, which could always help with, with costs.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And my last item tonight is going to be an action item on outside agency process. I'm going to make a motion that Borough Council may approve updated guidelines to the outside agency section of the borough's annual budget process.
Mr. Krampsey makes a motion regarding our outside agency budget process. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Mr. Stube. Any further discussion on this matter?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I don't know, councillor Landis and councillor Fulham Winston took, took the lead on this one. I think, you know, this is an exciting new process for us. I didn't know if they wanted to add anything to this.
Um, we can, I'll just say that we had some ideas from the last round of the, the agency process. And, and so we just thought it would be a good idea to, to look at what was going out and how we normally solicit those requests. And also in my experience with my neighborhood group, I will say that I know that we have a small amount of money that goes to neighborhood groups, and it looked like those two processes didn't exactly line up, but they were very similar when you look at them fundamentally. So we kind of gave some feedback, and our assistant Borough Manager Snyder took care of stitching it together and making it seem like a, you know, a nice cohesive and easily, easily understood document. So the idea is that it would be able to be more accessible to more organizations. It would be publicly available on social media, and it has some basic criteria. So the, it now has primary funding areas of community beautification, social programs, support of community activities and education with, with, you know, additional information related to that. We have ten thousand dollars in annual funding with a limit up to twenty five hundred per one organization. So that is what our basic outline is, and a little bit of an up, you know, uh, update from what we have normally done, but it's not completely different.
Great. And, and for those watching this, this was, I think, part of our council goal-setting session. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you had brought up this idea of community budgeting, and this, this, I think, fits into that nicely.
Absolutely. I'm very proud of the work that our colleagues have done and looking forward to this new process. Anything further on this matter? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
That ends my report. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Employee relations, citizen participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items this evening. First, I move that council appoint Mr. Joel Hicks to a one-year term as Chair of the Climate Action Commission. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire September first, two thousand and twenty one. Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute there.
You're muted, but I'm sure you're, you're asking for a second, so I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's something I can add to myself. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter?
I guess Mr. Hicks is sweating.
I will recuse myself from any discussion unless someone has a question for the potential applicant, and I will abstain from voting.
Wonderful. So noted for the record. All right. Note Mr. Hicks's abstention. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Appreciate your, your trust in me on this process. Look forward in the next couple of weeks to have a public announcement to bring in folks who want to participate as being part of this commission. But I'm really excited about this process, and I think we have some, some talent out there that are just ready to go roll up their sleeves and get going. So, thank you.
Very much looking forward to it. Um, I believe, oh, no, you have one more item, Mr. Stube. I apologize.
Two more, actually. I, I, sorry, I make a motion that council appoint Ms. Wanda Hunter to a full term as alternate on Human Relations Commission. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire on February twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you. Mrs. Stube makes a motion to appoint Ms. Wanda Hunter to a full term as an alternate on the borough's Human Relations Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion on this matter? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And I have one more item this evening. I move that Borough Council appoint Mr. John Warner to a partial term on the Planning Commission. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire on February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you. Mr. Stube makes a motion to appoint Mr. John Warner to a partial term on the borough's Planning Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Warner, as well. All right, moving on to public safety, I have an action item and a staff update. The first action item is I move that, that council authorize staff to draft and advertise bids for towing services utilized by the Carlisle Police Department. Interested parties will be, will submit fees for towing and storage. Contingent upon approval of the borough solicitor satisfactory review, the bid may be awarded to lowest bidder. Once the lowest responsible bidder is selected, all other bidders will be allowed to participate in providing towing services for the borough of Carlisle, provided they accept the same fee as the lowest responsible bidder. I so move.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Chief Landis, any comments? Are you good? He may be good. Okay, all right. This, this, this is something that, that we've done before, and I realize, and it was, I understand that one of our previous tours had dropped out of the business. So it's a good opportunity for us to refresh some things and get, get a new handle on it. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Yes, a staff update on traffic calming efforts at Bedford and East Street in the borough.
I guess I'll take that. Good evening, everyone. Over the last couple of months, both Public Works staff and the Police Department have received complaints from residents about speeding on Bedford Street and East Street. The Police Department did undertake several traffic enforcement in that area, and Public Works looked at that area from the standpoint of potential engineering solutions. Based on that very rough preliminary analysis, we did prepare a memo, which is in your packet today, which looks at Bedford Street and East Street and presents one potential for traffic calming that council may wish to explore further. And both streets are one-way streets, and for a majority of those streets, there are two travel lanes. Both streets are designated as bicycle routes in the borough's bicycle network. And there's also very high demand for on-street parking. In looking at all those needs, we thought that a, a potential solution to try to reduce the speed in that area would be to essentially reduce the number of travel lanes from two to one, and to use that space for increased parking, and also a dedicated bicycle lane. And I think there's a schematic there that's a very rough schematic, and it shows changing from a parallel parking to a, to angle parking. The intent of angle parking is to consume more of the space to, to provide for additional parking, and also to narrow the travel lane to provide for an incentive for reduced speeds. A lot more work needs to be done on this. If council is, is interested in exploring this, we would need to take some, undertake some detailed surveys and also some, some analysis regarding the existing traffic load there and speeds as well. The memorandum does provide for just a very rough estimate as far as what we're talking about from the standpoint of cost to make a, a change where we're not really modifying the structure of the roads, but more changing the, the striping. And that would be to go in and, and show the designated travel lanes, the designated bicycle route as a, as a dedicated bike lane and, and striping for, for parking, since we would be going from a parallel parking to, to an angle parking. Estimated cost, at least from a very preliminary standpoint at this point in time, would be somewhere in the range of thirty thousand for Bedford Street and fifty thousand for, for East Street. East Street being a longer distance because of, a, a longer distance for, for two lanes. Bedford Street being only one travel lane north of Penn Street. That's really the main difference there between the two. If council is, is interested in pursuing this, we would recommend some pretty significant public outreach to see what the, what the residents in the neighborhood felt about this option. It is a, a pretty significant change over what there is now from the standpoint of, of parking there. And also, you know, we didn't want to proceed any further on this if, if this was something that council really was not interested in having staff look at. So at this point in time, we're presented this and, and, you know, consider it, and we'll await any feedback that you may have for a further direction for staff.
Thank you.
Just an opinion. I think the residents are, are always concerned with parking. So being able to both increase parking, slow down speeds and make it more bike friendly seems like that's all very much rooted in our goals to make Carlisle a better place for people to live. And because it makes the neighborhood safer and much more pedestrian friendly and kid friendly as well. So I would hope we would look into this because it looks like a great idea to me.
I'll, I'll just say that, you know, reaching out to the neighbors and residents to find out what they think, get their opinion is a good first start. So I'd be in favor of at least authorizing staff to go those steps and then see what happens after that. Any other thoughts to the contrary or?
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to add, I, I'm in full agreement that I think a, a next step would, should definitely be at least reaching out to the Eastside Neighbors Association. And I'm happy to bring this up next week at the meeting, although I would think that additional outreach to individuals living on Bedford Street and East Street would be necessary as there, there are obviously a number of people who live on those streets that do not attend the Eastside Neighbors Association meetings. I also did just want to share, I received an email from somebody who does live on Bedford Street, who, who saw that this was on the agenda for this evening, but was unable to make it to the meeting and they wanted me to share their comments. This email comes from Mel and Laura Beaver, who resided 221 North Bedford Street in the borough. And they stated, Dear Borough Council, vehicles come up Bedford Street way too fast and when they hit the 200 block, they do not slow down. We are seeing that they do not seem to realize that at the start of the 200 block, the street turns to two lanes. When trying to park or pull out, especially on the odd numbered side of the block, it is dangerous. We've almost been hit several times while trying to get back into a parking space. And when pulling out, the vision for seeing past the intersection of North Bedford Street, Curz Avenue and East Penn Street is poor. And we are afraid it is only going to get worse as work begins on North Hannover Street. We personally do not think additional signage will help as speed limit signs are already ignored. We're not sure what the appropriate answer to this is, but we thank you for working to address this issue. On a final note, we would invite anyone to try and park and pull out in front of our home or the houses of our neighbors and see what we're talking about, especially on a car show weekend or on any weekday between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So like I said, I did want to share that and, and I'm in agreement that I, I think, I think it's definitely beneficial to continue to, continue to explore this option. I know from attending the Eastside Neighbors Association meetings that traffic on East Street and on Bedford Street is often brought up as a concern. I, I think definitely reaching out to that neighborhood group as well as residents who reside on both of those streets is, is definitely an appropriate next step.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stube, if you could just forward that email you received to the Borough Secretary for inclusion or minutes, that would be great.
I would just like to add one, one thing too, Mr. Mayor. As a fairly often writer myself, probably, and this is anecdotal, so I don't have statistics to back it up, but one of the most dangerous things I have found, and the only time I've had an accident is, is not from a car pulling out, but the car door opening into the bike lane, which is really easy to do on parallel parking. Which is why I've always been a huge fan of back end parking, diagonal parking, where the parking space is adjacent to the bike lane. And I've seen it not just myself, but it's, it's very easy for someone not paying attention just to open their car door right into a bike lane. So yeah, I, I like that concept if, if we end up sort of seeing that that's a favorable option for, for that area.
Thank you. Mark, I think you've got your direction.
All right. Thank you very much.
I will just put one other comment in. It's just, I, I always think it's really important as well to talk to the neighbors and get their perspective. But just as what, with the, the, you know, the note was that, that councillor Stube read to us, that they acknowledged the concern. They didn't have a perfect idea of what would be like the right answer to it. And I think that sometimes people see a, a plan and not like an aspect of the plan and try to, you know, maybe shut it all down. But I think making sure that we, when we're, when we're talking to them, it's not just this plan. It's, it's sort of like, it can be, a lot of the work we do evolves as we get feedback from folks. So just know that this is like an open conversation. It's not a yes or no. And I think that it's that middle area that we really get a lot of things accomplished. So I would guess that you're going to hear a lot of those perspectives from other folks in the neighborhood that do see this speeding, but they don't necessarily have a perfect answer. So I think just letting them know that this is an open conversation to try to make their neighborhood better.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments, council. Anything further before we move on? All right, that ends my report and we will now go to Public Works Committee, Deb Fulham Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two motions to present to council and then a staff update. The first is referencing the lamp post decoration for coming up this holiday. Borough, I ask council to consider granting permission to Destination Carlisle to decorate downtown lamp posts with pumpkin wreaths, wreaths and lights. The wreaths and lights would be on display for October and be removed the first week of November.
Thank you. Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion to grant permission to Destination Carlisle to decorate downtown, downtown Carlisle for Halloween. Any, is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And just a thank you to Destination Carlisle for their good work. Moving on to our, our other motion, I would ask Borough Council to approve compensating change order number one to adjust the estimated quantities included in the contract bid to equal the actual quantity of work completed on the pump station number one, force main repair and Ashburn Drive sewer replacement unit price contract, increasing the total price by $6,606.53 to $189,304.53.
Thank you. Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion to approve a change order for our pump station. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. And we'll have a staff update on the Wilson Street, Walnut Bottom Road discussion that had started previously.
All right. At the last workshop meeting, there was a discussion regarding the lack of, of psych distance at the intersection of Wilson Street and Walnut Bottom Road. And as a result of that discussion, council did authorize the solicitor to draft an advertising ordinance to provide for a additional no parking lane along the north side of Walnut Bottom Road, east of the intersection. That ordinance will be on the agenda for council's September regular council meeting. At the same workshop, there was also a question asked about why is the radius of, of Wilson Street so large in comparison to other roads in the, in, in the area? And council directed staff to take a look to see what could be done in there to reduce the, the radius and as, as a way of reducing the radius, potentially reducing velocity of vehicles turning off of Walnut Bottom Road onto Wilson Street. We did take a look at that and in your packet is, is a memorandum, which shows a, a schematic in, in blue there with the potential to reduce the radius from approximately 50 feet diameter to 25 feet diameter by extending the curb out from the current sidewalk further into the street. Estimated cost for that repair, or excuse me, estimated cost for that improvement, if borough staff would undertake it, would be approximately $1,500 for concrete to do that. The intent would be to extend the curb out to a smaller radius into what is now the returning lane off of Wilson, off of Walnut Bottom Road onto, onto Wilson Street. The blue, Walnut Bottom Road is a state highway, so the blue that's shown in, in the, the schematic is immediately outside of the pen dot right away. So this would be completely within, within borough right away. It would reduce the amount of paving in there. However, the, the reduction in paving cost over a, an annual, annual cost for paving is, is very minor in the amount of approximately $50 per year. The geo, the alignment of that area is such that it really doesn't benefit from the standpoint of, of treating additional runoff of the area because it is a high point, but it would be able to capture precipitation that fell directly on, on that, that area. And the intent would be to provide, to change that paved area to a, to a, a pervious area that would have either grass or mulch with, with landscaping. So that, hopefully that addressed the questions that were raised at the last, at the last meeting. And, you know, council, or if, if council is, is interested in, in having staff undertake that, we, we can put that on the list of capital improvements to undertake in 2021.
And it must have been even from the diagram, it looks like it would be safer and make the, make the whole intersection much more logical than it is right now. Does anyone have any questions for Mark?
Mark, and I'm, I'm sorry if I missed if you touched on this. Is there any talk of extending the sidewalk? I know that's a tricky intersection to cross and I know folks have been, I, I think we discussed this last meeting. Folks have been using that, that parking lane as kind of the turning lane and it's a bit long to cross and there's not a sidewalk there. Is there, can you take that into consideration?
Yeah. So right now there is sidewalk along Walnut Bottom Road on both sides of the road, north, or excuse me, north of the intersection going toward town. However, south of the, of the intersection, the sidewalk on Wilson Street terminates at the Baptist Church driveway. So from Wilson, south to Belvedere, there is not sidewalk along Walnut Bottom Road. There is not currently a, a pedestrian crosswalk at Wilson at the intersection, either across Wilson or across Walnut Bottom Road. Folks that want to cross Walnut Bottom Road, there is a signalized intersection at Belvedere Street where they can get a, a light to cross and, and a, a crossing signal. It is currently unsignalized there, so we would recommend not putting in a, a crosswalk along, across Walnut Bottom Road for there. There is parking along Walnut Bottom Road on the, on the south side. So folks that potentially want to park there and either go to, go to the Borough's Park or to, or to the assisted living facility can, can, can do so without having to cross the road. We were not proposing to make any changes to the sidewalk there, so the, the curb would, would come out around the intersection, but the sidewalk would remain in its current location. And then there would be that buffer between sidewalk and, 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 and curb.
In reading the notes on this and sort of what you just said, there's like the, the two options is the concrete pad or the vegetative area, even if it's not necessarily really ideal for stormwater capture. And on the details, it showed that maybe the, the concrete pad would be over the course of time, like about $50 a year maintenance. And it looked like maybe with mowing, it would be about $300 a year for a mowing contract for vegetative. So I know that, you know, that's just looking at numbers, but also just looking at what benefits the, the neighborhood and the community. And we've talked about neighborhood groups adopting spaces. And I know it was noted that it's, it, you know, the, the theory or the way it would look is that it's maybe part of that property, the people that own it. But the Baptist Church is right across the street and they have to mow, you know, their large facilities. And, you know, I think if maybe we open it up to the neighborhood, we could always see if anyone would like to adopt this little space and make it, you know, pretty and nice. If, because it would, you know, at least I would think that it would benefit the neighborhood. So I think that a lot of times we make these decisions, like thinking about numbers and maintenance and everything, but also just taking a little bit of extra time and talking to the folks and seeing if, if they have a preference. And if so, if they would want to help, you know, adopt a little tiny space and make it their own. I mean, that's what I like to do, but not everyone follows my, my lead on that. But I don't know. I just think, I just think it's a, a nice little addition and it could be something that could, you know, unite a little part of Wilson.
So in terms of moving forward, are we in agreement that Mark should move forward to at least explore these issues and then come back to us about whether or not it's impervious or impervious? Or would we ask that it be a pervious surface?
Impervious is always better.
Yeah, I, I would, I would prefer to, to look at options that, that are pervious.
Yep. Okay. I think that's probably all of us who would prefer a pervious to an impervious surface. So if, if that could be part of the plan, Mark, that would be delightful. And if we could find somebody who wanted to adopt it, that'd be even better. Who knows? There could well be someone, Brenda, just like you, but on Wilson Street. So.
Sometimes all you have to do is ask, you know?
I know. Absolutely. The church might take it on, you know, or the nursing home might take it on. So, you know, we've got some options right there. But is there any, Mark, is there anything else you need from us?
No, not at this point. Thank you.
Then that completes my report.
Thank you very much. And we are now down to new business. Is there any item either from council or the public that you'd like to bring forward right now? Now would be the time to do so. All right. Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.